Well, thank you for Judge Ladue coming over from the court today to do the bringing in ceremony, and thank you all for being here. We'll start off with the Counselor-at-Large, Judge, and Counselor Drowa.
It's an honor to be here. Follow me this way.
I, Robert W. Anderson.
I, Robert W. Anderson.
The Super Mayor in and for the discharge of the duties of the Office of Mayor.
Discharge of the duties of the Office of Mayor in and for the City of International Falls.
Mr. Hayward, um, I got a chance to read that. Mayor had to follow my It's a pleasure to have you both.
I would like to take this moment and is honored here to do this. Oh, I just saw that there was food to my left, so I thought Thank you guys for coming out. I appreciate it, especially my wife and honor for being able to come up today. I look forward to the next four years, so thank Good evening. Welcome to two city council meetings this evening for Tuesday, January the 3rd, 2017. I ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This would be the organizational meeting of the International Falls City Council. And item one is the administering of the oath of office, and I'd like to thank Judge Ladue for doing that, for Counselor-at-Large Drowa, and myself. That was done at 4:00 PM. And so we will move to the item two on the agenda, and that would be the selection of a council president pro tem. Counselor Brian Briggs has served in that role. Motion by Counselor Drowa to select Counselor Brian Briggs as the president pro tem.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Jackson. Discussion? Question? Stand.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and Counselor Briggs will act as president pro tem. Thank you. Item number three is the mayoral appointments to the internal committees. And you have the list of council committee appointments for 2017, 2018. I would move motion by Counselor Briggs to approve the council committee appointments. Taken by Counselor Drowa. Discussion?
Yes, I would like to take these individually and not all in a group.
I take each committee separately.
I am. What are you appointing here? All of these in one
No, 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 no. Just the council committee, the internal council committee.
Okay, and that is
That would be the first page.
The first page.
That's the council committees.
All right.
We'll be taking the others individually by commission or committee.
All right. So it would be everything on the first page?
Yes. Those are the council committees for 2017, 2018.
I do have a discussion item then on one of these.
Please.
And that is, I see where I'm being removed from the REC Commission.
Yes, we've made a change on two members there, and I think I pointed you to another committee.
No.
I believe you are also on the sources, and there's one other one.
I'm chair of the Human Resources and have been.
Community Ed and Cable Commission.
Those are prior appointments as well.
I think that was the only change that was made.
Remove me from REC Commission. And why?
Um, just bringing some change to the committee structure, that's all.
Brian, instead of me. Brian sits on the Airport Commission and the, what else? And the REC Commission and, yeah, well.
Thank you. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
I'll vote yes. There being three for the motion and one against. The motion carries, and council committees are approved. Then move to the external committees, and the first is the Fire Civil Service Commission, and it would be reappointing Mr. Jerry Jensen to a three-year term.
On the appointment of Jerry Jensen?
Motion by Counselor Drowa to approve the Fire Civil Service Commission appointment. Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and reappointment is approved. Thank you. My next appointment is to the Housing and Redevelopment Commission, and that would be the reappointment of Mr. Gary Davison to a five-year term on the Housing and Redevelopment Commission.
Move.
Motion by Counselor Briggs. Taken by Counselor Drowa. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Reappointment is approved. Thank you. Next is the Library Board, and there'd be a reappointment of Mr. John Dalton to a three-year term, and to appoint Ms. Lindsay Barnhart to a three-year term, and to appoint Ms. Darcy Sullivan to a three-year term. Motion by Counselor Drowa to approve the appointments to the Library Board.
I will second those.
Second by Counselor Jackson. Discussion? And I would just point out that the two new members to the Library Board, I believe Nancy McBride had served, and there's a state law that limits the number of terms that a Library Board member can serve consecutively, and she had met that. And then Mr. Art Holt had wished not to be reappointed, so that created two vacancies, and the librarian came forth with these two names of folks that were interested in serving. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Appointments to the Library Board are confirmed. Thank you. North Kooching Area Sanitary District, reappointment of Mr. David Farmer and Mr. Mike Rudd to three-year terms.
I would move on the reappointment of Mike Rudd.
I would second that motion by Counselor Drowa.
Motion by Counselor Drowa to reappoint Mr. Mike Rudd. Taken by Counselor Jackson. To a three-year term. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carried. Reappointment is confirmed. And to the reappointment of Mr. Farmer. Hearing no motion. Move to the Planning Commission? Please.
I have a number of issues I'd like to discuss about the North Kooching Area Sanitary District Board. One of them is we have a vacancy now due to Jim Robb's resignation.
Be coming up at the next meeting.
Right, and we also have the position that Mr. Farmer had, held, so we have two vacancies. I think we should be advertising for those. So I would make the motion that we immediately take steps to advertise for those positions and accept applications.
Motion by Counselor Jackson and second by Counselor Briggs to advertise the vacancies to the North Kooching Sanitary District Board. Mr. Farmer couldn't be here this evening. His wife is ill, and he was tending his granddaughter, so he could not be here to speak to his reappointment. Motion before us is to advertise on appointment of Mr. Farmer's position, and we will be receiving a, at the next meeting, a vacancy resignation from Commissioner Jim Robb. Okay, further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and advertising will take place. Thank you.
I have one more point. I would like it that whoever is appointed, that they would report back to the council on some basis as to what is happening at the Sanitary Sewer District. I think everybody is aware on the council, but it never comes forward to this body, so I don't know how much coverage it really gets, but we are, we received a letter of, a serious letter from the Minnesota PCA about being in violation of INI. And we haven't heard anything about that from the Sewer Board, so I would like, I would encourage the appointments when they do happen, that the appointees have, there's six city appointees.
Correct.
So, I mean, if they shared the duty, they'd only have to come once every three months and report to us if they, on a rotating basis. But I think that due to the fact that we pay 90% of the costs over there, approximately, and that we have perhaps a $20 million problem that we're facing, that we, if we were going to fix it.
No idea.
Well, no, nobody knows anything. I mean, they've been paying attention to other things besides this, but they don't know, they don't even know what the problem is exactly yet. But we do have some serious issues over there, and I think that we need to have it come to this council, what transpires, especially regarding this INI issue and the Minnesota PCA issue, on a regular basis.
On the inflow and infiltration issue, which is referred to by Counselor Jackson as INI, inflow and infiltration at times of heavy rains, the system gets, can at times get overcapacitated, and so there would have to be some discharge of sewage to the river untreated or partially treated. And so that's an issue that the Sewer District has been made aware of by the Pollution Control Agency, because they have to report that. And they have notified East Kooching, Rainier, and International Falls as the three entities that collect sewage and send it there for treatment, and they have, we have had folks meeting with them on a number of occasions, and it's some of our professional staff that has been meeting with that group. So I don't know where the figure 20 million comes from, but I just don't know that anyone's got a handle on exactly what needs to be done. We've got studies underway to determine that. I think there are a number of other issues over there. I know that Commissioner Robb, when he was the interim director, came forth with a list of about 12 to 15 items that were irregular or improper or illegal that were being done at the Sewer District. And so, you know, those issues need to be taken care of, but I know that they've had to hire special attorneys and accounting firms because of issues left over from previous boards and executive directors, and so I think that there's a whole host of issues that the board needs to deal with out there. We'll move then to the Planning Commission, and the reappointment of Mr. Brian Yusso, the reappointment of Mr. Gerald Franzen, and the reappointment of Ms. Renee Sobuleski to three-year terms.
Move on all three.
Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve all three reappointments. Taken by Counselor Drowa. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. The three reappointments, Mr. Yusso, Mr. Franzen, and Ms. Sobuleski are confirmed. Thank you. My appointment to the Police Civil Service Commission is to reappoint Mr. Marty Cody to a three-year term.
Move.
Second by Counselor Jackson. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and the reappointment is confirmed. Thank you. To the Zoning Board of Appeals, I would reappoint Mr. Peter Schultz to a five-year
Move on the appointment.
Motion by Counselor Drowa to confirm the reappointment of Mr. Schultz to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Yes, motion is carried, and reappointment is confirmed. To the International Falls Kooching County Airport Commission, Citizen-at-Large, we have a letter from Mr. Paul Nevinon, and would reappoint him to a two-year term on the Airport Commission. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve. Second by Counselor Drowa. Discussion?
Yes, I will make the same objection I did the last time you appointed Mr. Nevinon, as he's the director of KITA, and they have a contract with the airport going one way and a contract with the airport coming the other way. They rent the cold box, they also provide administrative services. So I think that it's akin to putting a contractor on your board, which I think is a conflict of interest, therefore I can't support this nomination. I do like Paul a lot, but it's nothing personal. I just think it's inappropriate to be putting a contractor on your board that you're doing business with.
Oh, your question or charge is that there's a conflict of interest here? Well, I think certainly Mr. Nevinon spends a fair amount of time at the airport, given the cold weather testing that's done at the airport, because the facilities are on airport property. And so he does have to spend time there as the director of the Kooching Economic Development Authority. He's well aware of issues at the airport. So I don't know that there's any conflict of interest in doing work there. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
I'll vote yes. There being three, four, and one against. The reappointment is confirmed. Thank you. We move to item four on the agenda for the organizational meeting, and it's the appointment of City Attorney Steve Schremon.
Mr. Mayor, before we move to that
Please.
We missed this on the first page.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It ended up getting jumbled in with the rest of our presentations of the council and Board of Commissioners.
The Convention and Visitors Bureau, reappointment of Ms. Kelly Franz.
I didn't see that here.
It's on the front page. It got mixed in with our
Oh, okay, yeah, I see it.
Motion by Counselor Drowa to approve. Second by Counselor Jackson. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and the appointment of Ms. Kelly Franz is approved. Thank you. We go to item four on the agenda, and that's under the organizational business, and that's City Attorney Steve Schremon.
Move.
Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve the appointment of Steve Schremon as the City Attorney.
I'd do it, I'll second.
Second by Counselor Jackson. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and appointment of Steve Schremon as City Attorney is approved. Thank you. Go to the Health Officer, and that would be Dr. Heather Cook of Rainy Lake Medical Center.
I'll move on the appointment.
By Counselor Drowa to approve the appointment of Dr. Heather Cook as the Health Officer.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion?
Well, my goal would be to eliminate this position, and I'm hoping the Charter Commission will bring that forward. I attended the last meeting. I'm not noted as being in attendance in the minutes, but I was there lobbying. So this is a total sham along with the Health Board. They never meet, and we're paying $300 a month for a health officer, and you may say it's a bargain, but we'd be far better off hiring advice as we go rather than being locked into a ridiculous $3,600 a year contract. So I won't support this.
Isn't it $300 a year?
$3,600 a year.
It's $300?
$300 a month.
I'm sorry.
It has been since, for the last 40 years, the same amount. And it's required by the City Charter, and it's up to the Charter Commission if they wish to change it, but I think there, certainly our forefathers had good reason to have a Health Officer in the charter, and if we no longer see that necessary, that's fine, but
That's a problem.
There could be the day that we might need one. So I think that we do have a Board of Health that's also required, and that would be the next action that we would take. But before us right now is the appointment of Dr. Heather Cook as the Health Officer for the city. Further discussion?
Well, I guess we have one, because it was forefathers. If it was foremothers, they wouldn't have been, we wouldn't have such a ridiculous rule. But anyway, okay.
No further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. How do you vote?
What do you think? No.
Thank you. There being three, four, and one against. The motion carries, and Dr. Heather Cook is approved. Thank you. Next is the Board of Health, three members consisting of the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, and the Health Officer. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve.
Second.
Second by Counselor Drowa. Discussion?
When have they met, Adam? Anytime during your tenure?
Further discussion?
And the comment on the forefathers is deserved, because forefathers is such a sexist
It's an expression of
Yeah, it's sexist.
Persons who have served before us. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
I'll vote yes. There being three, four, one against. The motion to approve the Board of Health is approved. Thank you. City Engineer, and we would appoint Short Elliott and Hendrickson as the City Engineer for the City of International Falls. Motion by Counselor Drowa to approve Short Elliott and Hendrickson as the City Engineer for the city. Second by Counselor Briggs. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Elliott and Hendrickson are approved as City Engineer. City Surveyor, the Public Works Director has pointed out that Woodseas Smith and, I'm sorry, I gave the wrong name. Woodseas Smith &amp; Nolting is the firm for City Engineer, not Short Elliott and Hendrickson. I apologize for that. It's Woodseas Smith &amp; Nolting. Thank you.
I was thinking it, but I thought maybe
No, no.
In a different direction.
No, no, no. No, I apologize. Too many
I think of the Airport Commission.
Yes, too many names.
I would go back and go Winston.
And I would second that.
The engineer.
Maker in the second. Any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. My apologies for that error. Go to City Surveyor, and the Public Works Director has recommended that the Woodseas Smith &amp; Nolting and Arrow of the North be named as the City Surveyors.
I would move on that.
Motion by Counselor Drowa to approve those two firms as City Surveyors.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion is carried, and Woodseas Smith &amp; Nolting and Arrow of the North are City Surveyors. Move to item five, and the approval of the payroll dates for employees that we biweekly on Tuesdays commencing January the 3rd. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve. Taken by Counselor Drowa.
Question?
Discussion, yes.
Point of information, Betty, is that the same payroll schedule, right?
That's nothing new.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. And the approval of the payroll dates is approved. Thank you. Item number six, under the organizational meeting, is the designation of depositors. That includes local banks and the, or credit union?
It includes the three local banks, Bremer Investment and Management and Trust. It also includes Edward Jones. It's in the second paragraph there. Outlines them.
Is that a new addition?
No, we had those in there last year as well.
Motion to approve the resolution by Counselor Droba. Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the resolution? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted. And the depositors are approved. Thank you. And item seven, under the organizational meeting, is the designation of the official newspaper, The Journal, for required publications. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve. Second by Counselor Droba. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. And The Journal is designated as the official newspaper of the city. Be nothing further to come before the council under this organizational meeting. I would declare the meeting adjourned.